Okay, oh, thanks. The official voice, thank you so much for that. And did you send the link to Stephanie too? I need to start with that, or we should wait and see if she...
Marie, are you sending the link?
She is.
Okay.
She's in.
She's in.
Okay, she's in. Good. Okay, welcome all. We are in the Utah State Charter School Board meeting. It is October 11th, 2023 at 10:01 a.m. And we welcome all of our board members here in the meeting today. And note that member Spiker has joined us virtually today. And we welcome member Carrie, who is always so good to add an additional board meeting to his monthly calendar and represent the state board and joins with us. And we appreciate it and his feedback. Oh, thank you. And Deputy Superintendent Angie Stones has asked to be excused today as she has another matter to which she needs to attend. So we appreciate always her advice and support as well as the full state board education and their help. We have some items of business we'll follow through the short agenda today, but we have some important items. Short does not mean we don't have quality and good things to accomplish today because we really do. It just means that we don't have as many of those, but what we do have are really important. So we'll start first. We asked member Bassett to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll go from there.
Join me in the pledge, my friend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see anyone here today who might be wanting to make public comment. Do we know of any who may want to make comment virtually? All right, I'm suspecting we do not have any public comments today. We will continue. And we welcome A.G. Olson, who is our great advisor here today, too. So welcome. We do have member Cisneros who's agreed to give us a thought today. And so, member Cisneros.
Happy to. I should have brought my readers, so we'll see how this goes. Think about the biggest financial decision you will make in your life. Maybe it's a house, a car, retirement planning, et cetera. What, but what about ours or our children's education? For most of us, the choice to attend college will be one of the largest financial decisions of our lives, and the ability to make this decision is grounded in the K-12 experience of each student. Even so, we often do not think about education in the terms of being a financial decision with the requirement to be a discerning consumer. Instead, we often think about it as either something we must do without option or as a gift bestowed upon us, and so we should just be grateful with what we have been given. A little over two decades ago, our legislature saw the benefit of choice in education ushering in the ability to become discerning and informed consumers of our family's educational experience. And with that legislation came the role of authorizing, creating a gatekeeper of sorts to the options students have. Those of us on this board have a profound responsibility as stewards of education. This entails not only understanding the tangible aspects such as budgets, resources, and infrastructure, but delving deeper into the essence of learning, the impact on students' lives, their growth, and their readiness for the future. Through this lens, the impact of education on students' lives extends beyond academic achievements. It influences esteem, aspiration, and future trajectories. A well-rounded education equips students with the ability to navigate an increasingly complex world, enabling them to make informed choices, contribute meaningfully to society, and advocate for positive change. Ultimately, the impact of education is evident in the success stories of our students, not just in their careers, but in their ability to lead fulfilling lives, foster strong relationships, and make a difference in their individual communities. As a board, we then must constantly reflect on the impact our decisions have on the lives of the individuals we serve. When we focus on providing holistic, engaging, and inclusive educational choices for Utah's families, we empower students to become informed consumers of one of the most significant choices of their lives. Let us strive to foster a culture of continuous evaluation and improvement, seeking excellence and innovation in our approach, ensuring that every investment in education translates into meaningful and transformative outcomes for our students, the true beneficiaries of our efforts.
Wow, thank you so much, member Cisneros. That makes, you know, what we do, we could be in a room like this and just talking together and forget that we're affecting individual lives, and that's the importance of what we do. So thank you so much. We provide choices for families so that, and learning, so individuals can make the choices they want to in their lives. So it really is all about choice, making choices to prepare for your future and the work that you do. So thank you very much. Those thoughts, I'll be thinking about beyond today. So thank you. I don't have a lot in a board chair report other than to say in the last few months, all of us have felt like we've been riding a fucking bull. A little bit trying to get through a few things. But the good news is, we held on, the buzzer has rung, and the bull has calmed down. We think that we will just be able to continue to move forward in a more, a little calmer way. We don't have an executive director report because we, part of that concern has been, we haven't had an executive director, although I'll tell you, thanks to Cindy in this meantime, really stepping up a lot. Marie, who is here, also stepping up a lot, others, to make sure that the work has continued. And I don't think our schools have felt like anything has faltered, though they may be at that place of kind of a little bit, but we have light ahead. So that's all a good thing. With that in mind, let's go to our consent calendar. Is there anything on that consent calendar anyone would like to pull? All right. May I have a motion?
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar.
Motion to adopt from member Smith. A second to that motion.
I'll second that.
And a second from member Bassett. All those in favor of approving the consent, say aye.
Aye.
And that was everyone, so I don't need to ask if anyone is opposed. So thank you. That consent calendar passes. We do have need, and we've put it the first of the meeting for reasons that will follow during the meeting, that we have just, and I don't think we will be a long time, but we do have need for just an executive session for purposes really of character and competency of an individual, which is allowed in law for us to meet in an executive session. So may I have a motion to that end?
I move that we go into a closed session to discuss the character competency of an individual as outlined in the statute.
I'll second that.
Motion by member Olson, and I'm hearing...
Second.
A second from member Smith. We do a roll call vote in that case. And member Spiker, you can still join us online as we do that, I believe, so I will put you on the phone. We'll get a hold of you, we'll call you, but I mean, we'll make sure electronically that you're engaged in that. So I'll even ask...
Sounds fantastic.
I'll ask for your vote first. So, member Spiker.
Yes.
Yes. Members Cisneros?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
And member, let me go to member Bassett first, yeah?
Yes.
And vice chair Phillips?
Yes.
All right, just how my mind was going around this way, so here we go. And so we are now in executive session. We should, we won't be any longer than the time indicated on our... Nine eleven, who on, nope, is it, were they on Nova Scotia? Where, no, the island, at least Canada, where all the planes landed and how they took care of all of those people from all of those jets. It really is fascinating. Uh huh. Yeah. I don't know why they need a bishop. They tried to go to the show. That's Martin, you do the rest. They all come to you, though.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're good to go? We're okay? Yep, all right. And I want to make sure that member Spiker is on. Member Spiker, are you with us? Somehow we need to get her back. I want to make sure she is.
We are back.
Did I just get that, go to that same Zoom address, that thing, because it's Team's address, Marie, that you need to go to?
Um...
The link, at least.
I see you. I see you. I hear you.
All right. We were in a break, because we didn't want to go forth without you.
Thank you so much. And I thank you so much for working with me today. I'm sorry, we've got a little bug running through my house, and I just, thanks.
I'm sorry that you do, but we, that's an easy accommodation and to make sure that you can be with us, and that's important. All right. We are back in an open session of the Utah State Charter School Board meeting on October 12th at 10:41 a.m. We are in the Utah State Board of Education's meeting room. And we are ready now to have an update on our state charter school board executive director. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're okay, I think. Better ahead than behind. So here we are. So to update, as folks know, we, former director Jennifer Lambert resigned her position. And we have been in the process of seeking a new executive director. We rewrote the job description for the kind of job we would like, the work that we would like to see that executive director accomplish. And we did that with a salary range and advertised that. And the state folks, I should probably tell you also that Michelle Watson, this office, is really very helpful. The HR director in the State Board of Education has been really helpful in making sure that all of the notifications went out, that all of the things have happened. And Selena Johnson, Selena's last name, who works also in HR for the state, Selena Johnson, I just remembered the Selena part, but I wasn't sure of her last name. Anyway, Michelle and Selena have been very helpful and accommodating and made that possible as we had 25-plus, we think 28 or so applicants for the position. And they were, made that use of the state system manageable for us as we reviewed the applications. And member Spiker, thank you to you for kind of leading that process of us reviewing resumes and the interview process as well as we then culled through those 28 resumes, reduced that field to five. Had member Spiker led that interview process with vice chair Phillips and I as the hiring committee, and we narrowed that field to three individuals. All three tremendous, all three competent. We could not have lost with any one of the three. We would have had a tremendous director in place. This full board, with the exception of member Smith, who was able to join us somewhat through much of the process, and we tried to record other pieces for her so she could have a sense of those candidates. We interviewed those final three and just had a discussion about pros and cons and what we liked and of those candidates. We are now, that brings us up to this point. So we had a special meeting to do that on a day that the fire alarm was going off in this building, and we went outside, we came back inside, we went back outside. We ended up just kind of having a standing discussion about folks. And we are at that place with those three candidates. I need to, if the board is ready to move forward? If there, as you look to those candidates, if you're ready to...
Yes.
Yes, member Spiker.
I would like to entertain a motion or make a motion.
Thank you.
That based on, yeah, that based, so my motion is that based on our final three candidates after our extensive search process, we would like to formally offer the position of the executive director of the Utah State Charter School Office to Dr. Paul Kramer.
Thank you. So, member Spiker, having gone through all that process, she really spent a lot of time with those candidates, would like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Paul Kramer. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
And member Olson seconds that motion. Any discussion from the board relative to that name? Vice chair Phillips?
I'd just like to say that I'm very excited at the prospect of having Dr. Kramer as our executive director. He brings a wealth of experience and education and passion for charters to the position, as well as a real love of Utah and its charter world. And so, I, as one board member, I'm very excited about what he could bring to augment the wonderful things already going on in our, among our staff and in our charter world here in Utah.
Thank you so much, member Olson.
I just want to quickly express appreciation to you, Chair Bowles, Vice Chair Phillips, and member Spiker especially, for taking the laboring oar in narrowing the field, reviewing the resumes really carefully. We, as a board, really appreciate all your efforts in that regard. And I also want to express appreciation to all the candidates and everyone who participated in this process. It was a good process, and we had excellent candidates. And I echo what you said, Chair Bowles, a minute ago, that the three finalists that we had were top-notch. They were all stellar, outstanding candidates. We couldn't have gone wrong with any of them. We're pleased, certainly with Dr. Kramer, but what an excellent batch of interested candidates. So I'm very pleased with how this has come out.
Thank you so much. Members Cisneros?
Second to each of the comments, and also to just speak in favor of the motion, that I think we had a robust discussion because of how qualified each of the candidates that we interviewed were, that it became a very difficult choice to really narrow down who was going to be advantageous. But I think what I'm most excited about with Dr. Kramer is the positive attitude and relationship building that is forefront in his mind and being able to establish great agreements with our schools and help our schools become paramount. So I'm excited for him, but again, so grateful for the process and what great candidates we had.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Are we ready then for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, and that motion is to appoint, offer the position of executive director and appoint Dr. Paul Kramer to that position, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I, that was unanimous. I don't need to ask for any nay votes because it's a unanimous decision from this charter board. We welcome Dr. Paul Kramer to our team. We'll continue that discussion with him. He, knowing that he was one of the candidates we would consider even offered to begin as early as the 23rd of this month, so I think we will make sure we send out an announcement to all of our charter family across the state, to associations and each of our schools, to make sure that they then are introduced to our new appointee and that they then can reach out, we can begin that connection. At the same time, I, this is, with an update, I think it's also appropriate to say that we are happy to announce also that we are appointing as associate director of this Utah State Charter School Board, Marie Stephenson. And Marie will take that position. We are so appreciative of you, Marie, and that we knew you would always step up and do good work, but we saw, not just words, but action during the last several months, that she just above and beyond completed work and took care of duties above the work that she was hired to do, but because she cared about what was happening with charters throughout the state, she jumped in and just took care of them, and we really appreciate that. And we appreciate your understanding of the history. It will be so nice to have, Dr. Kramer, I'll tell you, is coming from Arizona. It will be nice to have, with great background, I mean, extensive background in the charter world. And he's coming with that ability to, we believe, really lead forward, but it will be a great partnership then to have Marie with him as well, and Stephenson will be able to know the history of Utah charters and kind of our policies and procedures, and that makes it a great, a great team. We only see us moving forward. This is a great time. So I started by saying, we're bull riding. I'll just say that instead. We've been bull riding for the last little while, and we think we are able to kind of get everybody back in the corral and be productive and do great work moving forward. So thank you all, and congratulations to Ms. Stephenson as well, and congratulations to Dr. Kramer. I think we will all appreciate him, and he should join us in our next meeting. So we'll go from there. All right. We're a little bit ahead, but no, not one person I know will ever complain about that. We are now at a place of consideration of initiating a RFP for third-party survey to be provided to all charter stakeholders on behalf of the state charter school board, and I'm going to ask vice chair Phillips to kind of talk about that item, if she will.
Thank you, Chair Bowles. So a little bit over a month ago, the state charter school board, along with the Utah State Board of Education representatives, were called into the Administrative Rules Committee. At that time, that group of educators and leaders in education were asked to comment on various processes related to authorizing oversight, as well as increased flexibility in some cases related to that, and just some other questions. When you're called into administrative rules, it usually means there are some legislators not happy with what you're doing. It's not, it's not a party. And so there was some consternation about the relationship between the state charter school board as an authorizer and its authorized schools. Some of the individuals who were, had some consternation and concern about that were also people that we, our staff and our board, had actually reached out to and collaborated with on maybe some ways to improve that. We did that in advance and actually not with the sort of Damocles hanging over us of being invited to the administrative rules. We'd actually reached out prior to that. A.G. Olson was even involved in some of that outreach with us and had really affected some improvements in a relationship with a particular group, but then also a wider group. As part of that, the group that was concerned about the nature of these relationships brought forward some, a potential survey that they wanted to have the administrative rules of legislature to, actually to send out to charter schools in the state. As an SCSB group, we were, we were not entirely in favor, we were in favor of the idea of a survey, but not necessarily that survey, which seemed to be very biased against the state charter school board and didn't really provide an opportunity for people to respond in a neutral way or in an unbiased way, and also give comments, which we think are very helpful. We luckily had, our staff had data that was from surveys given over the last handful of years, well, really three or four, that was specific to the trainings that we've provided, particularly under Ms. Stephenson's leadership, to directors, teachers, support personnel at charters. And the results of those surveys were very good, very positive about the support that our schools, our authorized schools and all charters actually were feeling from our staff and from our board. The Administrative Rules Committee legislators also understood that we were, as one legislator called it, at a sea change, kind of at a point that where there was going to be a sea change in our organization. By that, he understood, and was made to understood by those of us who testified, that we were on the edge of hiring a new director, that we were anticipating passing and approving a new strategic plan, that we had been integrally involved in a redlining of the charter section, which is now, as you know, about 25 years old and needed an update for many reasons, but that we hope to update more in alignment with our strategic plan. And this was all very pleasing to the Administrative Rules Committee. With that in mind, they, the legislators on that committee were inclined to wait and see how things were going, to give us an opportunity to let the changes unfold and begin to have what we considered would be a very positive effect on our relationships with our charter schools, including an emphasis on the bilateral nature of the agreements with our charters. And to that end also, they know that in the past, and they anticipate that in the near future, we have and we will send out a survey from a third party that would give us very good information about, sort of after we've unfolded, how we're doing, what improvements our charters have seen. So it's not something that would necessarily be given out next month, for instance, but perhaps sometime, you know, in midwinter, mid-spring timeframe, so that our new director, with his new administrative structure, and we, as you know, we have some new staff members that we'll be hiring to fill positions of those who have left in these last few months, kind of in our transition period. The legislature is, per this committee, the legislature is interested in seeing how those changes affect our relationships with our charter schools and what data can be brought forward to demonstrate that. So I wanted to just give the board that history and to say that in the past, this is, this is a fair time ago, I want to say when I first got on the board. One of the complaints, and that's about seven years ago, one of the complaints from some of our charters was that when a survey comes out, it comes out from our office and isn't necessarily anonymous. And in the sort of climate of that time, some charters felt that they could not be honest and transparent with the way they felt without having retaliation from our board and staff. I'm sad that that's how anybody ever felt, ever. So that's, that's its own issue that I think we have worked very hard to change and resolve. However, knowing that that's how some have felt within this decade, I would like to, you know, propose that we seek an RFP for a third-party survey that we could, it takes a while to do these things, right, that we could at some point in the, you know, not too, not too far away future, send out to our charter schools to gauge, you know... out to our charter schools to gauge, you know, the quality and clarity of our communication to get a, sort of a, a gauge on, on how our authorized schools are feeling about our relationship with them as their authorizer in that bilateral agreement. I, I certainly would not want it to be sent before our new team had a chance to establish relationships on a, a friendlier basis, a clearer basis than perhaps we have in the past. But given that these things take time, given that this is an, an expectation from the legislature for us, I think it would be a good thing to direct our staff to do. So that, that's, I, I'm willing to take any questions about that, maybe that come from just my experience that day with the Administrative Rules Committee or my experience with the schools that, with whom we collaborated before that, before that day, if there are any questions about that.
Any questions from members of the board, members of Sisneros?
I'm in favor. I'm just curious if it is going to be directed by staff or it's going to be directed by the board. I think that changes the lens. I also wonder if there's benefit in sending out sooner rather than later as a baseline.
I think those are really great questions. So when we sent out a third-party survey before, and I, you may have even been on staff, members of Sisneros, I can't remember, you may be the one that needs to answer this question, but, but I think that what we did was, we had a third party use a, kind of a researched-based template, if you will, so that we didn't come up with the specific questions, although we could weigh in on it, because there were some things we wanted to know that maybe the template didn't address. But it was administered entirely by somebody else, not, not the board, not the staff, and we, but we were provided with the results so that we, and some support in analyzing those, that data by the third-party provider. And so I, I wonder if the baseline, if we don't already have the baseline data from previous surveys, we have some that's very positive from our trainings, we have some older survey data demonstrating the sort of lack of support that our charter schools feel or have felt in the past, not, not necessarily feel right now, but have felt in the past. And I would be very interested in seeing what that data was after, you know, a handful of months of our new leadership and then determining where our problem areas still lie, where our, where we're doing well, and having that inform our new leadership going forward. But I'm completely open to suggestion here. I wanted you to know what the Administrative Rules Committee legislators are expecting and why, but they're very excited. I mean, on a positive note, one of the reasons they didn't launch the survey that was presented to them is because they felt it would be premature and they felt that given the data we have from the trainings we've done, which were very positive, that some of what was being brought before them was a little dated by, by some, some of the, those who are disgruntled. And so the combination of feeling that that was dated, they had some good data before them about the trainings and support that our, our schools were feeling from that training and support, and then the idea that we were, we were sort of having this sea change in our own, own organization, those things were compelling enough to them to say, we're not going to give this survey, we're going to sit on that idea, we're going to let the SCSP take its own steps and then we'll consider this another time if need, if needs be. So in many ways, our doing what needs to be done and what is best practice, I think will head off having the legislature micromanage in that affair, which I would just very much like to head off.
I, I, I like, excuse me, I like the idea of a baseline and I, I don't, I, I don't love the idea of, not, not that it's necessarily massaging the outcome of the survey by kicking it down the road a ways, but that's kind of what it sounds like to me. I love the idea of just getting it out the door. Granted, it's not going to happen overnight anyway. It takes, it takes weeks and weeks to put something like this together, even after we have the RFP and, and we've selected someone. But I don't see a need to hesitate and it seems like something that we could do on a regular basis. And I think if we get a baseline out sooner rather than later, we can build on it, it'll give us ideas, it'll help our new Executive Director identify weak points that need to be addressed sooner rather than later, rather than wait.
I agree with the concept of having a regular survey and starting our baseline sooner rather than later. I also feel like it would be very unfair of us to try to judge, like if things have gotten better with a new director after a relatively short period of time, like, you know, he's been working for two months and now you're surveying my performance, like, I feel like one now, a follow-up in a year. And I would support an annual survey.
I, absolutely. And in fact, when I said, you know, that, it's been my intention, and in fact, I asked for this to be on the agenda for this reason, I felt that if we start now, we, we still would not probably be able to give that survey until maybe even February, by the time you do the RFP, look over the templates, figure out what you want to know beyond that, and then actually get the results back. So i- if we're calling that baseline, I'm very comfortable with that. I certainly don't want to delay the process of getting the RFP and I am very much for a third-party survey. I think that's something we should budget in. It should be just part of our budget every year and our school should never feel like, you know, that, that we're doing it for any other purpose than to become a better institution rather than to sort of, you know, highlight people who don't like us or something. I mean, actually, sometimes those people give us the best feedback ever and we can improve ourselves. So I think, I think we're really on the same page. I don't, I don't know if February will really give us the baseline that we might get today, but I think doing it sooner is a good idea too, and that's one of the reasons I did want it on this agenda, thinking that if, by the time we begin the process, we're not going to have a survey probably out till February anyway, but we should start it so that we can, so that we're not only looking as though we're responsive to the Administrative Rules Committee, but that, so we're getting information. And, and this first one probably will be, I anticipate it will be a little bit less positive, let's say, than maybe something in a year. I'm, I would hope that as the years go by here with our new leadership and our new systems and our strategic plan, that we would have our schools feeling very much the support of a partnership in us, so.
Historically, it seems that the N size has been relatively small to actually be truly meaningful data. So I'm, I'm just putting it out there on the record that hopefully people have heard the intent of the survey and that will motivate them to respond, but also that our partners in the associations will help advertise that, knowing our intent and help encourage people to, perhaps speaking at association meetings to explain the intent, so to increase that N size, so that people feel, I, I think the intent was, I, it won't matter, so I'm not going to spend my time doing it, and I would love if we can head that off in the advertising of the surveys our N sizes are representative.
In response to that, and I fully agree, I will say that, and Ms. Stephenson can maybe give the, the numbers, she probably has them off the top of her head, but one great, I hope it portends well for this, one, one great piece of data that may, may be kind of a, sort of fortuitous, you know, or, or speak well of what we might get as an N size for this survey, is that the, the surveys that we did for our trainings had an incredibly high response rate. I want to say it was well over 50%, maybe 60 even, which is, depending on which survey. Which is unheard of, as you know, from your own surveys that you've done at schools and districts. And, and so the positive results we got, and they were very positive, in some cases between 85 and 95% positive, had a, had a really good group of responders. And so I'm hoping that maybe that suggests that people are willing to give us some feedback for things that, at least that they loved. They loved these trainings and they wanted to say, please keep doing them. And they gave good suggestions about other areas that we could help with and maybe that, maybe that's a key we should, you know, focus on, that when we gave people an opportunity to give true feedback rather than just kind of check a box, that we had some good, really good response.
I think incumbent in that too is, is making sure that the results are shared with the full group, that everyone, we don't just keep them close to ourselves, but share with all of the charters across our schools across the state and make sure they understand, you know, and this is what we're doing as a result, so that they do see result. That only improves the subsequent surveys too, right? And that they can be assured that they can be open and honest and, you know, just be in an anonymous survey from their perspective too, I think is important. All right. So what, what action do we need to take? Member Phillips, anything, if it's just informing folks unless someone has a concern and then we just move forward? We've heard the, the cautions and desire from the board.
I, I'm not sure that, I, I, I would think that we need to actually take a motion to direct staff to do this, because it's not something that I think we've budgeted for. We may even in, need to talk with some of the USBE folks about our budget there. We certainly have the funds, but we may, I think in order to have that, did we budget for it already, Ms. Stephenson? So maybe then just to, to direct them, to our, to our staff to do it as a board.
Okay. And, and making sure that they've heard the, the directions that the board has given relative to that. All right. So let's maybe have a motion. Do you want to make that motion, Member Phillips?
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation. I would like to move that we initiate an RFP for a third-party survey to, that would be provided to all charter stakeholders on behalf of the SCSP and to direct staff to begin that process.
Right. So a motion to direct the survey, to have, direct our staff to begin that process? Any second to that motion? Do we have a second? From Smith. And any discussion? All right. Not seeing any, we'll move right to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, nay.
Aye.
All right. And I heard Member Spiker as an aye, right, Member Spiker?
That is correct.
But so we, that's unanimous vote to direct staff to begin work on that. Thank you. And do you want to talk about retreat also, Vice Chair Phillips?
Okay.
That'd be great. What? That would be great.
That's what I was going to suggest.
That's Member Smith's favorite place besides here, yeah.
So we, of course, don't need a strategic planning retreat. We've used the last couple of meetings to vet and, and approve a strategic plan. However, we have a new, a new administrative team coming on, we have a new director, and in the past, we, we have engaged consultants who have helped our group to reflect, to sort of do a needs assessment, to look at ways that we can improve our relationship between board and staff, as well as our productivity, and even to, to look at values and how our decisions align with those and so on. So Chair Bowles and I, as we were talking about this transition, we want to make sure that we, we, we had the idea and we, because we want to make sure that we get off to a very good start with our staff who have stayed committed and stayed engaged in this work and our new director coming in, it's a transition for the board as well, that it may be worthwhile to plan, you know, in the, in the next few months, some kind of a, a retreat that would allow our staff and our board to, to take the next step forward and to be prepared to do that. So we just wanted to bring that to the board and see what the board thought.
Good feedback from the board. Anyone? Timing wise, thought, I think we need a, a new director to have a little bit of time to, to get ready for us as far as timing. Go ahead, Member Smith.
I love the idea of trying to build culture and cohesion between, with us and the staff. I, I think we all have excellent working relationships, I'm really happy with that and also things can always be better. And I feel like we might want to wait at least until after the legislative session before we do something, because we will be so, so very busy during that period.
Okay. That, that's good advice, good feedback. Anyone else? Other thoughts? All right. So how about if we, yes, absolutely.
So we do have some, to Member Smith's point of waiting until after the legislative session, and then we're right up on where some seats are then going to be vacated with new board members coming on. And it's not to say kick the can, kick the can, it's what would be the function. And so if the function is relationship building and, and working, then does it make sense to have had that retreat and then bring on two brand-new board members who don't get to participate in the retreat or replace the retreat? So I'm just wondering, when we're talking about timing, we have a lot of differences to this board happening relatively on the backs of each other, that maybe it's a, maybe it's not right now prudent to do it, maybe it's a, a down-the-road kind of thing to do.
That's a, a good caution and I'm not even sure of all of that timing, but maybe we could talk about that now a little bit. November, we, at this point, don't have a heavy agenda and last year, you may remember that we canceled our November meeting, but I'm hoping that those who attend NACSA might come back and say, this is what we gained from it in November, and we do have a couple of other items. I'm thinking if we cancel a meeting toward the end of the year, it might be in December, since that becomes a busy month, that if we're canceling a meeting, it might be our December meeting, something to think about. We haven't done that yet, but would mean that in November, we'd want to kind of, to talk to our board about applications coming back and that process that we'll be doing in January, because January is a big meeting. And legislative session begins January 20-something and won't finish until middle, well, 1st of March, like around the 6th or so of March. And so February becomes a, a difficult time in that meeting, because folks need to be flexible to respond to committees and other things. So, so thank you for that caution, Member Smith. So.
I just want to say, I don't, I'm not, not married to the idea of it has to be after the legislative session. The concept is really to avoid the legislative session, so if you do it before, that, that could be a reasonable way as well.
Good point. That's a good point. And I see Ms. Stephenson has something, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bowles. I just wanted to remind the board that in the funds that you set aside for this, from your carryforward, depending on what you choose to do, you likely have enough to do something sooner and something later on, if you would like.
Thank you. And we really didn't get to really work with consultants that we have on retainer. We didn't, you remember our retreat, we had another pressing item that took almost all of our time and we really didn't get an opportunity to really work with them and talk about steps moving forward. So that's important as well. So I may not get, so we could in, as soon as November, and we will have Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer with us by then. We, I may not get my wish to cancel a meeting December. If we really need to do it then, then we need to do it in December. Thoughts from anyone? And of course, it's going to matter if we have a consultant come when they're available as well. So maybe what we should do is ask if we can find out their availability and see what is possible and then communicate with the board relative to that. I'm not hearing anyone objecting to the notion of, of a board, just timing, of a retreat, but just timing of that and what would we accomplish during that time. So let's bring that back to the board and talk about potential timing. But I, I think Member Sisneros asked a good question. I'm not sure of rotation cycle of, of this board, some of us, yeah.
So Member Smith and I will be transitioning off the board. A Member Sisneros might know best, because you were brought on on what, in what month? Was that July?
Well, with the new process, the legislature has to interview and it was a June appointment with an August start, so I think it's a June off with a, because I think just nobody meets in July and so then the first meeting for the new would be August.
I thought it would be early summer, yeah.
Yeah, but I think June is actually when the appointments are made and terminate.
Thank you.
Yep.
June 30th.
Yes.
Is it? And that's what, so it says, June 30th, it says?
Yeah, so June 30th, it says, my term ends, Member Spiker's term, Member Smith and Vice Chair Phillips.
But Member, Member Smith and, and myself will.
Irrespective of any reappointments, that, that's just what's in.
Irrespective of any reappointments, that, that's just what's indicated on the website as the end of the term.
No, we, you and I will have, will have served our two terms, and so the others will, are likely to be reappointed and then confirmed by the Senate. And so ostensibly, there will be two openings, because I think both, you know, we, we anticipate Member Olson and Member Spiker to be reappointed, and so it would be those two. And, and just along those lines, my thought would be this, you know, you inherit a culture, right? And so, and there are times when less is more, I understand that. But I think in this case, where we've been through really a quarter, or a third of the year now in transition, it would be, I like the idea that Ms. Stephenson brought up, of doing something with our engaged consultants sooner, establishing something that's helpful to our new administrative team and, and staff and board, and then, and then maybe you look at doing it again when you get these new board members on, so that you've solidified a culture that they can inherit, and then they have an opportunity right away to, to, to sort of feel that, that, that strategic planning as well as value planning.
All right, so let me, a couple of things. So one, I think that Member, ultimate Member Spiker, that reappointment just kind of happened, they don't need, they don't go to the legislature, too.
They do, they do.
Well, the reason I say that is I never, I didn't when I was reappointed, and I don't think Member Bassett did, did you?
You slipped through the cracks, sir.
Did you have to go to a Senate committee? Neither of us did. So, so they may, they may say, hey, you don't get to stay, you didn't do what you're supposed to, just, just saying, but I would suspect that Member Olson, Member Spiker will probably, you know, that that will be a smooth process, and the, the other process will be smooth, though it, it's a bigger loss for us, and it takes more time to consider replacements and to have, get that done, too. So, all right, so that was my one question, is about just process. And then my other question, the other part is, so could we get, maybe Marie, could you call among the team, our consultants call Paul, what's the name of the consultants that we, the National Charter Network? I should know that, I'm so sorry. So if they hear this meeting, doesn't mean I discount your work, but, thank you. And see, maybe as soon as November, since I think we still have time to do that, even in November, we could have an initial meeting and maybe with some assignments to follow up even a little later, it might be a good time to have a start, and then a, something in progress would be good for us. If they could come as early as our November meeting, that would be great, and then let's do that, let's plan on that. Anyone having concern about that, you want to discuss? Okay, if that works okay, let's plan on that November time, and we'll go from there. Yes, please.
I just wanted to point out that while Chair Bowles and, and Member Bassett seemed to sail through without a confirmation process, that I myself was dragged in person before the Senate and had to justify my continuation on the board. So I think, I, I think there's a disparity there, that it doesn't speak well of me.
What does that say?
Maybe so.
Either they know how much influence you have, and they think, oh, he's not, it's not going to make much difference. Bassett and Bowles can just go on, because it, well, it wouldn't matter. So who knows? Who knows why? I don't know, but neither of us did, and it, maybe because we didn't remind them that we needed to, and so, okay, all the better. So let's, I don't necessarily feel the need to remind them, Spiker and Olson need to either, so at any rate, as long as it just continues through. All right, but let's plan on November, if we could do that, and that'll, that'll give a good start, and with a new director in place, that will be very helpful. All right. We don't have any other items on our agenda today, but we may have a retreat in November, we will have some report from NACA, we will have opportunity to prepare for our big January meeting where we're considering charter applications, and that gives us some reminder of what we do to prepare for that. But we have no additional items, unless someone has something that they'd like to talk about, if not, may, someone might want to make a motion at 11:25 in the morning.
I would like to move to adjourn.
So motion to adjourn. Do we need a second to motion to adjourn? I always forget. And it doesn't need a vote? We are adjourned. Now, I'm just going to say, Member Carey, don't you wish Utah State Board of Education meetings...